I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, April 15th, 2024, to order at this time, and we will start with our Assistant County Manager, Ben Warren, with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. This evening, as we recognize our Vietnam veterans, we ask that you bless them abundantly for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they made, and for their many contributions to our nation. God, please bless our citizens, first responders, and those defending our nation this evening, and may we ask your blessings be upon us always. In your name we pray. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize the elected officials with us tonight, and I believe, ah, Register of Deed, Mr. Amiga Jarman is here with us, and then Sheriff Chris Thomas is here with us this evening. So, we appreciate both of them being here. I don't know that there's anyone else I've missed, so thank you again. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. With that being said, we need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
A move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. The agenda is adopted. Ah, now moving to the approval of the items on the consent agenda. If no one has any questions or concerns, need a motion to approve the consent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, and we'll move right into proclamations, and Mr. Warren, you will start us with that tonight.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. We do have two proclamations this evening. The first is the Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day 2024, and I will read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day 2024. Whereas, the Vietnam War is a story of patriots who braved the line of fire, who cast themselves into harm's way to save a friend, who fought hour after hour, day after day, to preserve the liberties we hold dear. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many veterans continue to serve our community as public servants and mentors, parents and community leaders. And whereas, as a grateful community, we are humbled by the sacrifices rendered by our service members and their families out of the deepest sense of service and love of country. And whereas, today, we reaffirm one of our most fundamental obligations, to show all who have worn the uniform of the United States the respect and dignity they deserve, and to honor their sacrifice by serving them as well as they served us. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares April 27th, 2024, as Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day in Onslow County, and encourages all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public or private ceremonies and gestures presented this the 15th day of April 2024. Members of the Vietnam Veterans of America Incorporated, Chapter 654, will accept the proclamation, and the chairman has requested that Commissioner Scott present the proclamation.
Come on up, gentlemen, please. If y'all would just allow me a minute to get the rest of it set up for us. If I could have Ms. Galloway, Ms. Sanders, Mr. Medcalf to join us, please. Ms. Galloway will be representing the Gold Star families of our fallen heroes. Ms. Sanders will be representing the nursing staff that our wounded warriors received during combat. Do we have a medic in the house? Okay? The medics and the nurses were the last things that your loved ones seen. Commissioner Buchanan, your presence is requested on deck. Mr. Smithelman, if you would stand, and you will represent the veterans of the Onslow County employment. Okay? Paul, if you would come over here with him. It is indeed an honor to be here tonight to present this proclamation. I don't know if you know it or not, but we had millions of people involved, civilians, children, women, that were killed during this conflict. It cost many lives. The doctors and the nurses done a tremendous job to do everything they could to bring our wounded and survivors home. Unfortunately, the heroes, and I can tell you right now, anybody that knows anything about military customs and courtesy, the wounded that did not come back are heroes. They will never speak again, but God bless them. God bless their families, and may we never forget them. There's only two things that I can say about this proclamation. Mr. Medcalf is representing our future military personnel. He is the youngest one in attendance tonight. Okay? So, that's why he gets that honor. Ms. Sanders is representing our nurse, and now the nurses' staff, and Ms. Galloway, you've got the honor of carrying the gold medals, families. I too, my aunt, Elmer Williams, Sergeant Terry Williams, was killed in action in Vietnam. Most of my family members do not know that. So, on behalf of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, if you will come up with me. Paul, Paul, this is presented to you in recognition of your dedicated service, your ability to be on the front lines. There's only two other things that I can say with one three-word gap. Welcome home, Vietnam veterans. And the second one's duty, honor, country. There's nothing more important. God bless you.
Thank you, Father.
God bless you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank y'all for participating.
27 April. I'm gonna steal the spotlight for a minute, Warren.
Right ahead.
27 April, next two Saturdays, Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day, down on Lejeune Memorial Gardens, starting at 10:00. So, if you're afraid and you want to recognize our Vietnam veterans, please attend. It's a very nice ceremony. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll continue moving through the proclamations. I know Commissioner Scott brought Commissioner Buchanan down there. Vietnam veteran and Purple Heart awardee for his sacrifice there. So, we appreciate that proclamation and then that dedication to everyone there as well. Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. Our second proclamation this evening is for National Coin Week 2024, and I'll read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Coin Week 2024. Whereas, the American Numismatic Association, the ANA, is a nonprofit federally chartered educational organization that has sponsored National Coin Week since 1924. And whereas, the Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club is an ANA member club dedicated promoting numismatics in its community. And whereas, the theme for 2024 National Coin Week is "A Hobby for a Changing World, 100 Years and Counting." And whereas, coins, paper money, and related objects have long been used to commemorate notable people, places, and events throughout history. And whereas, the designs on United States money tell the story of our country's history and help form national identity. And whereas, collecting coins, paper money, and other numismatic objects has always been one of our nation's most cherished and popular pastimes. And whereas, local clubs across the country are celebrating National Coin Week by sharing their hobby with others. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges April 21st through 27th, 2024, as National Coin Week in Onslow County, and calls upon its citizens to celebrate with exhibits and activities to increase the knowledge of numismatics and promote the joy of collecting coins and paper money presented this 15th day of April 2024. Representatives from Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club will accept the proclamation, and the chairman has requested that Commissioner Bennett present the proclamation.
I think everybody loves coins. Coins have been around a long time. Was Caesar maybe the first, the first coins that were recorded? So, it's, ah, it's an honor to be able to proclaim National Coin Week, although we have to be careful because these guys will pass a wooden nickel to you in just a minute. Thanks, Alvin. You have anything to say?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to thank the commissioners for the proclamation. I'd like to invite everyone in the community to become to one of our coin club meetings. We meet the second Thursday of each and every month at the Chamber of Commerce or the Commerce Center over on Gum Branch Road. Be glad if you have any kind of interest, or if you just want to know what you have, we'll be glad to tell you what you have. If you just want to hang on to it, because the majority of the time, a lot of what people have is really worth more from the sentimental pass-through-the-family transition than it is as far as the monetary value of them. But, ah, welcome everybody to come to one of our meetings.
Don't take any wooden nickels.
Don't have some in the back if you want.
Thank you very much. As we'll move into our presentation, be there, Charters of Freedom, and Mr. Ron Lewis will be coming up to present.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
It's certainly a pleasure to be here with you tonight, representing the Charters of Freedom and our founding documents. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the current Board of Commissioners and every citizen in Onslow County for the 10 best years of my career that were spent here in your county. I have many great memories and a few not-so-great memories, like eight named hurricanes that came one right after the other, and we could claim to be the best-trained hurricane responders in the country. Can I have the first? I have the first slide. Boy, your AV guy's on the job. Foundation Forward, I joined, I retired in 2012, and shortly after that, I joined our founder, who is Vance Patterson, an entrepreneur and just an amazing, amazing man, in creating Foundation Forward. Next slide, please. We are a non-political, a non-religious organization that builds the Charters of Freedom across the country. We built the first three before we became a nonprofit. We built the first one in Burke County, North Carolina. The second one was in the very far western portion in Cherokee County. Cherokee is right there at Tennessee and Georgia, and you can't go any further west in North Carolina than the beautiful Cherokee area. The third one we built in Buckham County in Asheville. At that time, we realized we were going to be spending a lot of money, and we were going to be working with counties all over North Carolina. And our goal at that time was to build a Charters of Freedom in all 100 counties in North Carolina. We currently have dedicated 30. There are five under construction in various stages throughout the county, which means that I have a few more to do. Now, let me say to you that Onslow County has been high on my list since we began. However, it just never seemed to be the right time. Well, folks, commissioners, it is the right time, because as of, as of a few months ago, I could stand here and tell you that we've never spent a tax dollar, that everything we have spent has been private money. That has changed. The General Assembly, this past session, seeing what we were doing, decided to appropriate $500,000 to build 20 settings in North Carolina. A large number of those, we have designated to go into eastern North Carolina, because most of our settings are in the west. So, I'm, I'm just absolutely thrilled to be here tonight to offer, to gift to Onslow County the Charters of Freedom. Now, it's not good for me to stand here and say, "I know something about Onslow County that you might not know," but I'm gonna take that chance and tell you that the original design of your new courthouse designated an area, it's right now grass. As you come down the steps of your new courthouse and look to the left, there's a grassy area there. That area was initially designated to be the location of the Charters of Freedom. I, I think it, it's, it's a marvelous location. Yes, you have a number of marvelous locations in your beautiful county, but I wanted to, to let you know that in the planning stages a decade or so ago, that, that spot was designated for the Charters of Freedom. And, you know, an old county manager should never tell a Board of Commissioners that he knows something that they don't know. That, that wasn't a very prudent response, Mr. Chairman. But I, but I, just in case that you didn't know, I wanted to make sure that you, next slide, please. I'm gonna sit down while a video plays. You're a very qualified audiovisual guy who's gonna show you a video that tells the story better than I can.
I want to tell you about the principles of Foundation Forward. The number-one principle of Foundation Forward is education. No matter what you take from this experience, it all goes back to education. Education on American history, to preserve that history surrounding the time of the founding of our country. Education on government, so all will know how government is meant to serve and protect we the people. Number two is access. You see, not everyone can get to Washington, to the National Archives. We want to provide access to these founding documents in communities in a proper setting. And number three is community. Having your Charters of Freedom allows your community a place where they can gather to celebrate, to honor, and to reflect. People ask us, "Why are we doing this?" And we tell them, "Yes, it's very expensive, but it's more important than money." We believe it gives us a direct link to our founding fathers by helping to preserve what it is they gave this country, a government to serve and protect we the people. If you want a monument or a setting to last, you put more underground than above ground. These are not tip-over monuments. Your foundation goes down three and a half feet. It is solid, reinforced poured concrete, coming up into a solid, reinforced core. Just the core and foundation of the center display weighs over 38,000 pounds, over 19 tons. There are six documents displayed. All are life-size, which means the Declaration of Independence is a little larger than the others. Each one is on quarter-inch etched bronze and weighs over 60 pounds. There is a Charters of Freedom medallion on the front, which is very special. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. Proud, bold, defiant. The seven stars above the eagle represent the seven articles of the United States Constitution. The 10 stars under the eagle represent the first 10 amendments, your Bill of Rights. From the beginning, this has been an education project. We learned we had two founding fathers who were very big on education, Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin Franklin. These two believed that in order to have a free and independent country, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. Thomas Jefferson, in 1789, said, "Educate and inform the whole mass of the people. They are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty." And James Madison wrote in 1822, "A people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power knowledge gives." Our hope is that our future leaders will come from communities where they have their own Charters of Freedom setting, that your children will no longer grow up just talking about the Constitution and Bill of Rights of Washington. They'll be talking about their United States Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up right in your own community. My question is, are you ready to be a part of history? Because we're gonna dedicate your Charters of Freedom. It's gonna be here for the next 300 to 500 years, and your future generations are gonna know you were here.
Your Charters of Freedom in Onslow County will have an additional pedestal. I was making a presentation in Monroe, North Carolina, Union County. I had been the county manager there for six years. I thought I was going home to a good old boy day. And where Commissioner Buchanan is sitting, there was a young, black, African-American. And I finished my presentation very similar to what I'm saying to you folks, and he said, "Mr. Lewis, you did a marvelous job on your presentation, but you didn't do anything for me." So, I took a step back and took in what this young American was telling me. And I went back to our staff, and we sat around the conference room, and I said, "Folks, we have a problem. There's a group of great Americans that believe that we haven't done anything for them, and, and we must fix that as we move forward with dedicating the Charters of Freedom." About a month later, Vance Patterson, at our next staff meeting, said, "We've figured out what we should do." And he presented something to us called the Civil Rights Amendments. It's the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th Amendments, which makes all of us the same, regardless of your gender, Commissioner Carpenter, and regardless of the color of your skin. We're all Americans. Now, when Thomas Jefferson and James Madison left Virginia to go to Philadelphia to draft the Declaration of Independence, they took with them something called Virginia Papers. Now, the Virginia Papers abolished slavery. It didn't take those two statesmen long after they got to Philadelphia to realize that they didn't have the votes to pass that document. But they were bringing enough, and with God's help, they put language within the Declaration of Independence that allows it to be amended from time to time as our society changes and as the world changes. Hence, we have the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th Amendments that will be part of the display in Onslow County with, with, with your blessing. Now, I said to you earlier that we have the money in the bank. It's just a matter of deciding where the place to put it is, and for you folks to agree to accept our gift. We're gonna be building in eastern North Carolina throughout the summer and into the fall, and even into the winter, because in eastern North Carolina, we can actually pour concrete most days in eastern North Carolina. It gives us a little bit of an edge in completing those designated settings. Now, I want to full disclose that your senator was very much involved in helping us get that $500,000 appropriation. I started out my presentation to you with saying I would be remiss if I didn't thank, thank Onslow County for 10 great years. I would be remiss if I ignored your senator and not build the Charters of Freedom in Onslow County. If we stay on our current plan, by the anniversary of a big, big, big celebration in '24, where we celebrate the birth of this country again nationwide, the sons of the American Revolution and the daughters of the American Revolution will be using that Fourth of July. I personally have set a goal to have the Charters of Freedom in all 100 counties across North Carolina in 2024, when, when we do that celebration. Most of the celebrations throughout North Carolina are taking place in Guilford, because the Guilford Courthouse was so much involved and is a, is a very important location for the founding of this great country. However, that doesn't mean for one second that the other county, the other 99 counties can't participate in celebrating that festive occasion of the birth of our country. Now, next slide? Next slide? That's what your setting will look like with the fourth pedestal. They're in chronological order. The first document on the left is the Declaration of Independence. The four pages of the Constitution are in the middle. The original proposed Bill of Rights is on the right, and now the Civil Rights Amendments are built just to the right side of that. So, that, that is what your setting will look like. We haven't determined the exterior material. We would like to try to blend it into what you have, wherever it's located, that it would fit very nicely. Now, we have money in hand to build it. Mr. Chairman, any run-up work, like sidewalks or flagpoles or anything else that the county might want to add, would be your cost. But people have done it as simplistically as plant grass or as elaborate as unbelievable sidewalks and, and lighting, and that, that's really your choice. But, um, once you identify the site, and I would ask each of you to look at that location that I identified for you tonight, but there are other pretty appropriate sites in your gorgeous county. I know firsthand, because I've been to them. But we would like to enter into what's called a letter of intent that we will draft and send to you that points out very specifically what our responsibilities to you will be, what your gift would be, and what the recipient of the gift is expected to do as a result of that. I will complete my presentation. Is that the last slide, Mr. AV guy? Use it a lot. I hope that, and I know firsthand that Onslow County will use it a lot, because this is the most patriotic community that I've ever lived in, in my entire 74 years. You see the guy dressed like Benjamin Franklin? That's me. My wife wants me to lose my profile so that I don't longer look like Benjamin Franklin. I put that in there for a purpose, because we have some educators in the audience tonight, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And everywhere that we go, the homeschoolers cling to the Charters of Freedom. Mr. Chairman, I hope I live long enough to see our public school children appreciating the Charters of Freedom just as equally much as the homeschoolers do. That, that's my goal, and I'm sticking to it. Now, I'm gonna be quiet and ask if you have questions, Mr. Chairman.
I was wondering if you've given any thought to adding the 26th Amendment that gave all 18-year-olds the right to vote?
We have not, but if, if that is something uniquely that Onslow County would like to add, that's a possibility. We have not done that. We did do the Halifax Resolves in Halifax County, which predates, which is actually before our declaration, the National Declaration of Independence. before our declaration, the National Declaration of Independence. So to answer your question, Commissioner, we will consider and evaluate any possibility. I'm not going to say no tonight, but we have a history of doing that, of trying to accommodate the local community with any specifics. When we build the declaration, when we build the charters of freedom in Mecklenburg County as well, the Mecklenburg Declaration of Independence will be included in that.
Any other question? So that information will be moved, sent to Mr. Smitherman with me and him if we move forward to put it on the agenda in the future.
Good.
So that'll be good.
It's, any more questions? If not, I have concluded my presentation, and I hope you all have the glossy handouts.
Yes, yes, sure we do. Sure do. We appreciate you coming today, Mr. Lewis. Good seeing you again.
It's my pleasure. I always enjoy the five-and-a-half-hour drive to Onslow County.
It's a good end destination.
My wife, I met her here, and she likes to come back to Onslow County. She teaches CNAs at the local community college, and today she had to teach class, so she didn't get to come to her favorite place. And I'll probably pay for that over the next week or so. But thank you so much. And County Manager, thank you for arranging this, for me to be here, and I look forward to working with you as we construct the charters of freedom in your beautiful county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. We'll move into our 2024 County Health Rankings, and Ms. Chrissy Hoover, our Health Director, will be coming up to present for us.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2024 County Health Rankings. This is the framework of the County Health Rankings. The County Health Rankings are based on a model of population health that emphasizes the many factors that if we improve them, can help make our community a healthier place to live, learn, work, and play. The County Health Rankings are published each year by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and it shows the difference between the health outcomes, how healthy our communities are now, and the determinants are the health factors that are modifiable and that can influence how healthy our community might be in the future. The 2024 Health Rankings have just been released, and Onslow County ranks 24th out of 100 counties for health outcomes and 43rd for health factors. And in this scheme, one would be the highest or the best, the most healthy, 100 would be the lowest or the most unhealthy. And so we'll delve into just a couple of the sub-metrics here. So for those health outcomes and health factors, as you look across this slide to the right-hand side, anything that is highlighted in yellow are areas where we ranked in the bottom half of the state, where we have room for improvement, where we really can modify some things and lead to better outcomes for our community. Looking first at health outcomes, health outcomes measures length of life and quality of life, and in both of these areas, Onslow County improved. Overall, our health outcome score improved this year compared to years past. When we're looking at length of life, it's often helpful to stratify it, and we use different methods to really kind of draw attention to where we can do the most work or have the most improvement. Overall, the life expectancy in Onslow County is 75 years, but you can see that we have variation when we stratify this data by race. And then also, on the right-hand side of your slide, you'll see that we have taken a geographic look at it. If you look at the small inset in the bottom-left corner of that slide, that dark green represents the second-highest area of life expectancy in our county. The highest area is down along the North Toppsil Beach area with 84.2 years, but in that Northwoods area, we're at 81.3 years. 2,600 feet separates that dark green to the next section that is just to the south, or I guess to the right, and is the lowest area of life expectancy at 69.3 years. So 2,600 feet separates 12 years of life expectancy. Largely, this is due to the differences in affluence that we see or income that we see in those areas. We know that that area, that is the lightest shade of green, is one of our most socially vulnerable areas in the county, and it is, you see it in the health outcomes that we show here. Next, we'll take a look at the health behaviors. Health behaviors is one of the areas where we have the greatest struggles. There were a few areas where we improved or got better. Physical inactivity, we now rank 33rd. Alcohol-impaired driving deaths, we are still in the lower half of the state, but it is better than where we have been. STDs, we rank 88th, but it is better than where we have been. And then with teen births, there's a lot of way, there's a lot of room to go. We're 95th out of 100, but there is improvement that we're seeing in that area. Some areas where we slipped are areas where we saw, you know, us get a little bit worse. Smoking and obesity, the food environment index, access to exercise opportunities, and excessive drinking are all areas where we did slip, and then some of these we are near the lowest in the state. Clinical care and social economic factors, there were several that we do really well in. We rank very high whenever we look at the percentage of individuals in our county that are uninsured. We do well whenever we look at the amount of dentists that we have per capita, and then community safety and injury deaths. Some areas where we have opportunity for improvement, primary care physicians, we rank 77th per capita for primary care physicians, preventable hospital stays, and then a Medicare measure for mammography and flu vaccines. Unemployment and social associations are also areas where we struggle, where we rank low in the state. Physical environment is an area where we have typically ranked very well. This year, we slipped quite a bit to 62nd in the state, and this was largely driven by the lack of affordable housing. And so this slide comes from some North Carolina housing information to just tell you guys what you already know, that housing and affordable housing can be an issue for us in Onslow County. To close, I'll say that today is the opening day of our Community Health Needs Assessment. We do this Community Health Needs Assessment in cooperation with Onslow Memorial Hospital. This consists of a survey that we are asking all Onslow County individuals to complete, and we are going to be publicizing this through billboards in the community and also through several of our partners in the community. It is a brief survey. It won't take too long, and the link to it is found here on this slide. You can also use that QR code. Additionally, we will have focus groups where we will have key informants from community partners and also individuals that represent certain groups in our community that we definitely want to hear from to learn what they believe could be improved in our community to lead to better health outcomes. The survey closes on May 31st, and we're very eager to see what our community tells us about the health of Onslow County. This concludes my presentation, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those for you.
I just have a question. The factors that are listed here are pretty self-explanatory, I think, but for me, social associations, can you give an example?
Yeah, social associations, that's one that's really interesting. And so the way that they do that, it's actually a business measure. It's the number of businesses that have a membership associated with it. It is a proxy measure for that community support, that kind of integration that you get in communities where people live together and are really bound in a close-knit community. And so I think that's part of what you see with the struggle that we have in Onslow County with transient communities. But it is a proxy measure, and it's actually businesses that have a membership associated with them, like bowling clubs, could be country clubs, things like that, if there is a membership piece associated with it. I hope that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Have you any idea why people who live in Jacksonville live longer?
I think it's an interesting thing that you look at. Certainly, we have, you know, the population that's so dense right there, but whenever we look at that geographically, we see that it really lines up very well with income. We know that with education, higher income, it gives people better health insurance, better access to health care. They have, you know, other struggles that they don't have to deal with, like the community that is more impoverished might face. And so I think that that is largely one of the things that we focus on.
So if you want to live a long time, you got to live on the beach or in Jacksonville.
I've got to move. So I increased my whole life. How many when it said we're 95th in teen births? Do we have a number on the number of teen births in the last?
Yeah, so the latest data that we have is from, I think, 2021, and I think it was around, we're looking at the 15 to 19 age group, and it's around 217 births that we had in Onslow County, I believe.
How many of those would be, which I don't know if you know this, but we have a lot of young Marines move here at 18, 19-years-old, and there's a lot of 18, 19-year-old wives with them. Does that play into that number as well? Because we have the youngest or one of the youngest populations in the state of North Carolina.
Yeah, I think you bring up a great point, and I think that it matters, and I think that that is definitely something that we could see. We have many married 19-year-olds where there is an intended pregnancy, and that is absolutely what their desire was. Unfortunately, we have several that are not that way as well, and so I think it's important that we balance both of those factors. Specifically, we don't know how many of them are DOD dependents, but yes, that is absolutely an important factor to consider when you're looking at our data.
Any other questions? All right, fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Right, thank you, guys.
Mr. Smitherman, public comment.
Yes, sir.
We have two speakers this evening, Mr. Chairman. The first one is Marsha Wright.
I wanted to come this evening to say thank you all to the Onslow County Board of Commissioners for approving the mounting of a picture in the portrait gallery of the courthouse for my late husband. We've been here, came here in August of 1979, intending to spend four years, once I got out of the Marine Corps, we were going back to wherever, and fast forward 44 years, I'm still here, he was still here, and so am I. He was a member of this commission from 1992 until the year 2000. He served two terms. And one thing I can say about him was that it's rare that you meet a person who seems to have known all their lives what they wanted to do. Because I asked him at one point, you know, why did he want to become an attorney? That's all he ever wanted to be. And considering that we were both members of baby boom generation, I think it was because all of us learned what we learned about the law from Perry Mason. So he used to watch shows of Perry Mason, and that was it. That's all he ever wanted to do. And so when we got here, you know, of course, he had to spend time in the Marine Corps and then came out and went into private practice. That was really the love of his life. He served primarily to represent people who needed representation and to defend them. He also practiced labor law. He was very interested in serving and representing people who were employees, particularly federal employees in the workplace. But he really loved being the attorney for the Guardian at Lydham Program. He was the longest continually-serving attorney in North Carolina in that program, having served over 35 years. And the program represents, or he represented, children who were abused and neglected, and that was very, very dear to what he wanted to do. We will, once this process is finished and so on, we will have an official unveiling of the portrait once it's done, and so you will hear about that later on. But I did want to mention some of the people who came to support me this evening. I have behind me, if I can remember, Sam Carradine. Ernie was a member, a 50-year member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity. He was a charter member of Phi Lambda Lambda Chapter here in Jacksonville, and that organization was extremely dear to him. And Sam Carradine is here to represent his fraternity. Behind me, I believe, I also saw Dr. Maxwell Gilliam and his wife, Dr. Connie Bruce Gilliam, as she and Thomasine Moore are members of the sorority that I belong to, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And they are lifelong, or not lifelong, but long-term members of our community and also long-term friends, so they came to represent me and to support me as well. And Thomasine Moore is the attorney he went into private practice with when he left the Marine Corps. And she and John Carter from the city and other county and city employees have been very instrumental in making this happen, so I really wanted to acknowledge them, not only being here, but to make this happen. So I do appreciate you all. You see the information about the bio in there, but I do really appreciate you. He always admired that gallery in there, and so did I, so I'm sure he would be very proud of this. So I appreciate you all approving that this evening, and I will be letting you know it later on, what we do about the official unveiling. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Chris Thomas, Sheriff Chris Thomas.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. First, let me relieve the concern looks you have. This will not take five minutes. I've had a lot of, several questions over the past week from some citizens about some activity they've seen at the sheriff's office, and y'all have had a part in it, so I wanted to make the announcement here in front of y'all NG 10. Y'all know of a year ago, I started talking about an inmate work crew, an inmate work program to help clean up our county. And as this is National Keep America Beautiful Month, I thought it'd be a good day to come up here and announce you that the program is running. It's been running. You will see our van on the roadside, random roads, pulling a trailer with inmates picking up trash. We started last week. Worked real good so far. Weather permitting, we will continue this program. This program allows me to, if I meet certain number of hours of roadside pickup, I will actually be able to generate more revenue for every SMCP inmate that I have, regardless of whether they work or not. And as the program advanced and we get more comfortable with it at the sheriff's office, I intend to expand it to departments of the county. I had one, the landfill, stopped me on the way in and was asking me about it. So inmates will be able to go and help things such as pick up trash around the landfill or help parks and rec, things of that nature. But that'll be when we have gotten good and comfortable with it. But I just want to take a couple minutes to come up and announce that. The board approved the resolution that I needed for it. I appreciate that from y'all, and the program is up and running, so if you hear anybody asking, they've not escaped, they're out picking up trash. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the public speakers for this evening.
All right, so we are going to move right into public hearings, Mr. Smitherman, and you are up.
Yes, sir. Our first public hearing on the Horizon Lane rezoning will be presented by Carter Metcalf.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. First rezoning of the night is the Horizon Lane Rezoning Request, P R E Z 2023, number 31. The applicant is the same as the owners, and that is David Crooks. So begin, we'll take an overview of the request, to change the property from rural agriculture to residential eight manufactured. The tax map number is 325-24, and it's located at 109 Horizon Lane in the Jacksonville Township. It is 0.66 acres, and the current use of the property is single-family residential. As we look at the services for the property, there is a two-inch unwasseled water line along Horizon Lane, and the property is served by individual septic systems, and there is a septic permit on file with environmental health. The property is served by Southwest Fire District with an ISO rating of three. Nearest and most recent traffic count we have is off Halls Run, comes from 2021, had a trip count of 4,000 trips. Staff estimates the capacity a little over 13,000 for a level of service D. The school serving the property is Southwest Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. As we take a look at the zoning, it's, again, currently rural agriculture RA, and that's what the lime green is. The pink is R15, and you can see as well also nearby Residential 20. As we look at rural agriculture, minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, and the purpose is to preserve the agricultural character of the county and that rural development pattern, while comparatively Residential Eight Manufactured has an 8,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily developments, as well as specifically manufactured housing in urbanizing areas of the county that have access to necessary infrastructure. We look at the future land use designation, it's high-density residential. Its purpose is for high-density single-family and multifamily developments. Take a look in this on the map. You can see there, the property is high-density residential with also then that Community Growth Activity Center there to the north of the property. And R E M is a corresponding zoning district to the high-density residential. So take a look at the environmental concerns, there's no regulated floodplain on the property, and there's no adjacent blue line streams per our GIS data. As we look at reasonableness in the public interest, the proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable, because R E M is that corresponding zoning district to high-density residential and is well-supported by several policies of the comprehensive plan, the goal of creating diversified housing and of different types. The proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable just because of two other policies in the comprehensive plan, which is really, we want to promote density along sewer lines, not necessarily septic. As we look at what happened at Planning Board, it met at December 7th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant spoke and was there, and no citizen spoke against. there, and no citizen spoke against it. Our military liaison was present, and there were no military impacts reported at the Planning Board meeting. This took place so long ago. It requested the applicant. We kept trying to, to work with their schedule to get them here, and unfortunately, they were unable to attend tonight, but submitted a statement that is included in your packets. So look at the aerial. You can see there, it's located off Halls Run Road. And as mentioned earlier in the presentation, there is a residence on the property. You can see there from the aerials. There is well the adjacent Horizon Lane. You can see where we posted the property there with the structure in the background. So it's respectfully requested before the board. And the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z twenty twenty-three, number thirty-one, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents. Concludes the staff presentation.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll open the public hearing, and seeing that there is no one signed up to speak, we will now close the public hearing and turn the matter over to the board for further deliberation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item five B is a rezoning titled the Lindsay rezoning, and Carter Metcalf will present this matter also.
So P R E Z twenty twenty-three, number thirty-five. The applicant is Charles F. Riggs and Associates, and the owner is N C Storage Group One LLC. As we take a look at the overview, the request is from Residential Twenty to Highway Business. Tax map number seven-six-five dash sixty-five point thirteen. It's located at one-fifty-six Everett Yop Drive in the Stumps Town Township. Rezoning area is one-point-five-two acres, and the property is currently vacant. Let's take a look at the nearby services. There's an eight-inch unwashed water line along Everett Yop Drive, as well as there's also obviously unwashed water lines along N C one-seventy-two, which is also nearby. There's wastewater for individual septic systems in the area, as well as unwashed sewer, you know, formerly Pluris Sewer. The fire service is Turkey Creek with an ISO rating of four. Most recent traffic count comes from 2021 on N C Highway one-seventy-two with a traffic of twenty-thousand-five-hundred trips. Staff estimates the capacity just north of twenty-seven thousand for a level of service D. We take a look, the school serving the property is Dixon Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. Look, you can see, the property is currently residential twenty. Is there adjacent to the landing at Everett Creek? That's adjacent there on Everett Yop Drive and going kind of to the northwest. There, between one-seventy-two and the property is a commercial development, and it's currently zoned highway business. So we take a look, current zoning, Residential Twenty, minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Its purpose to accommodate low-density, single-family residential development in suburban areas of the county that have access to infrastructure to support it at that scale. So we look at highway business, there's no minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors or certainly our major thoroughfares. Take a look at our future land use designation as high-density residential, is to accommodate high-density, single-family residential areas as well as multifamily areas where appropriate. Now, we'll look at the map here. You can see that high-density residential is that light green band. And again, the idea is that there was a Community Growth Activity Center that was centered on four corners and kind of be radiated in density as you went out from there. So that was our KAMA plan. As we take a look for the Sneets Ferry Community Plan, outline the categories, kind of split between Village Center, which highway business would be a corresponding zoning district to Village Center, and is transitioned there into suburban living, which was, again, and goal was to encapsulate the landing at Everett Creek, again, promoting certainly suburban growth. Always look at their environmental conditions. There is the very edge there of Everett Creek, but certainly no regulated flood zones on the property. Now, as we take a look at reasonableness in the public interest, it could be considered reasonable due to the adjacent highway business zoning to the subject property, as well as several policies of comprehensive plan. So it could be considered unreasonable because highway business is not a corresponding zoning district to high-density residential, even though both would promote multifamilies of technical use. Two policies of comprehensive plan, which would, again, want to promote buffering against adjacent uses. So we take a look at Planning Board. They met at January fourth and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant spoke on behalf of it, and there was two citizens that spoke against the request and had general questions. They were concerned around traffic, specifically with access off Everett Yop Drive. It was concluded there is no legal access, as well as concerned with lights from the existing commercial, which the Ansel County Zoning Ordinance would provide regulations to mitigate any light pollution. No military impacts were presented or discussed at the Planning Board meeting, and our military liaison was present. You can see here the surrounding area. You can see wherever Yop connects to one-seventy-two. See, the property is vacant. You can see that commercial use there that it does a but. Let's take a little closer look. You can see that the property is vacant, while there is some different dirt paths around on the property. You can see as well where we posted the sign there along the Everett Yop right-of-way for notice of tonight's hearing. And there behind, on the other side of that gate, is the, the proposed lot. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z twenty twenty-three, number thirty-five, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents. Concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll now open the public hearing, and we have one speaker signed up, Mr. Charles Riggs.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Good to see you tonight. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Mr. Alan Lindsay, who is the owner of North Carolina Storage Group. He owns the eight-acre mini storage facility just to the south of this one acre. He purchased this one acre, one and a half acre, and the eight acres from Mr. Charles Yop in November of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. The mini storage was created in the year 2000 and up and running to today. The one-and-a-half-acre lot was created in two thousand and nine. And if you look at the aerials, you can see that Mr. Yop used that one-and-a-half acre for limited open-air storage through the years. Okay? The one-and-a-half-acre lot is landlocked. The only access it has is through the mini storage. So we are here tonight to request rezoning it to highway business so that he can use that as part of his mini storage facility. Through the years, the Yops owned all this property. They did drive through this parcel to the adjacent Everett Yop Drive, as you saw probably in this photograph that he has here. However, that was just a private driveway. Mr. Lindsay does not have any legal right-of-way or easement to the adjoining street. Okay? There were discussions at Planning Board regarding lighting on the adjoining properties. Of course, the, the adjoining property was created in two, twenty twenty. That subdivision created that lot in twenty twenty. And interesting enough, at that time, that area was, through the land use plan, deemed to be high-density and multifamily. You follow me? So they put a single-family there on that two-acre lot. So, but any lighting that we would have would be dealt with through site plan review. Okay? So basically, I'm looking at this as housekeeping. He owns that one-and-a-half acre. The only access is through the existing mini storage. He plans to use it for open air and go through the site plan process. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll now close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for their
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Our final rezoning this evening is the Davis rezoning matter that Carter Metcalf will present now.
Our last item, and third, and certainly not least, our Davis rezoning request, P R E Z twenty twenty-four, number one. We made it to twenty twenty-four here. Applicant is Courtney Davis, and the owner is Linda Brooks. So we take a look at the overview of the request. It's Residential Fifteen to Highway Business. Tax map number three-two-seven dash eight-point-three, and is at forty-six seventy-five Gum Branch Road in the Jacksonville Township. Rezoning area zero-point-five-eight acres, and the existing use is, that is currently vacant. As we look at the services for the property, there's a fourteen-inch unwashed water line or water main along Gum Branch Road, and the properties nearby are served by individual septic systems. The fire service is for Half Moon Fire District with an ISO rating of five. The traffic count we have there before you is for Gum Branch Road from 2018 at twenty-three thousand trips. And notably, in 2022, there was a trip count, but it was at twenty thousand. So supposedly, according to N C D O T, it had gone down. So we wanted to put the highest one within recent timeframe before the board, but as well, we also had that other count. Three schools serving the property, Stateside Elementary, Jacksonville Commons Middle School, and Northside High School. As we take a look at the zoning, you see the property is currently zoned R fifteen, along with many of the other properties in the area. Well, across the road there in that light blue is highway business. To compare the two districts, Residential Fifteen has a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate-density, single-family in suburban areas of the county that have necessary infrastructure to support it at that scale. We look at highway business, no minimum lot size, but its purpose is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors or certainly our thoroughfares. And we look at the comprehensive plan, property was split between two different districts. The first was the local commercial activity center, and the goal of this category is to provide a mix of uses, and it would serve as the focal point for local community activities. And we'll look at that on the map in a minute. The other category was rural residential, and this is to preserve undeveloped or sparsely-developed areas that were not agriculturally, or not agricultural forestry, and their goal was to create that rural impression of the county and being out in the country. Now, as we look at these two categories, you can see the local commercial activity center was centered there along that Gum Branch-Ramsey intersection, and then the rest of the area was to be rural residential. Again, you'd have a focal point at our two major thoroughfares and decreased density from there. As we move forward, you can look at the flood zones there. There are no regulated flood zones and no nearby blue line streams within our field of view. If we look at the reasonableness and in the public interest, it could be considered reasonable because highway business is a corresponding zoning district to that local commercial activity center, as well as there is also the adjacent highway business, supported by a number of comprehensive plans with our focus of supporting diversified shopping. The proposed rezoning could be considered unreasonable because highway business does not line up with the rural residential category. And again, those policies of the comprehensive plan include us providing adequate buffering against adjacent uses and reviewing our roadways. As we look at Planning Board, at February first of 2023, the Ansel County Planning Board met and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant spoke, and the property owner spoke on behalf of the request. There were no citizens. However, the board had several questions regarding access to the cemetery behind the property, and we'll look at that in a minute, and those were discussed and reviewed. The military liaison was present, and no military impacts were discussed. So you can see here in the aerials, the property outlined with its proximity there to Ramsey Road, which is a number of residenials in the nearby area, and then across the road is that Dollar General. But as we look a little closer, you can see there that there is a cemetery in the adjacent piece of property. The board had several, the planning board had several questions regarding the access. There is a deeded sixteen-foot access to that cemetery. The owner of the property is also the steward and the caretaker there of the Littleton Family Cemetery, was deeded to her in 1989 by Mr. Woodrow Littleton. So certainly there, the board wanted to make sure that there was proper access, and we confirm that to the board there at the hearing. And then the last item there, we see the property was posted ahead of this hearing, and behind you there is that portion of the lot, and you can see the cemetery there behind it. So it's respectfully requested that Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z twenty twenty-four, number one, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. Mr. Chairman, there is no one signed up for the public hearing, so I will open and close and turn the board, the matter back over to the board.
Motion to approve. Second. We have, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to bring up a couple of things. Now, all right, now, Metcalf, if you would, just come back up briefly. Mr. Metcalf received a phone call from me this morning. I was extremely concerned about the accessibility on the cemetery, and I called the chairman. He had similar concerns, and I want to thank you and your staff for doing a complete turnaround to make sure the three questions that were presented to you, they have all been answered. And I want the public to know, I hope you don't think that the commissioners on this board, or any other board, past boards, do not go out and look at this properties. Because I assure you, this commissioner does, and several others do too. And, Tim, I appreciate the conversation this morning, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
My concern is just the congestion in that area. That, that is a congested area with traffic backs up and all kinds of problems there, and, and we would just be adding to the problem there if we were to approve this, in my opinion. So, yeah, that's just the thing that's weighing on me a little bit there.
I was gonna ask, on that topic as well, do you know what N C D O T has planned for the expansion of Gum Branch Road? I know for a while that's been something that was entertained. Is it on the books? Is something that will happen? I know you can pretty much count on one of our ambulances being on that road multiple times a day.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So it is in the STIP program, so it's our Strategic Transportation Improvement Program. Gum Branch is broken up into four phases, as the goal was to get those to score higher points and to be able to get them funded fully. So they're in the process, I know, just of doing shoulder work. Number of intersections have had safety improvements, but it's in the pipeline. We're still waiting to hear back from the state on how all of our projects ranked for prioritization seven, but we're certainly in the process of that.
So it's in the pipeline?
It's certainly one of the projects that, as our committee, that works with the Jacksonville Urban Metropolitan Planning Organization at the staff level, one of the ones that we certainly pushed for. We know Gum Branch is a key thoroughfare, and everyone on that committee pushed for us to try and get that one higher. Also, at the end of the day, we have, we can kind of boost the scores of certain ones, and so I'm certain that if it falls below where we would like it to, there'll be discussion at our level, and then as well the Technical Advisory Committee, or the T A C, the actual voting body, would decide on that.
It just, it just concerns me that, you know, reading one of the customer, and I'm feeling merry with the area as well, and the congestion there, it seems like D O T, you know, we're in the pipeline, you know, we're planning on this and all that, and yet it's another three, four, five years. It's going to turn into a piney-green project. And, and that took forever. It's great now, but it's going to take forever. And Gum Branch is just congested. In fact, Gum Branch is extremely dangerous during the day or at night, no matter what time you, you travel down that road. And now we're going to add a business to possibly provide more congestion and danger to the citizens who live in that particular area. Is that what I'm reading, based on the description?
I mean, highway business would allow a number of, of businesses, yes, sir.
So what kind of businesses? Are we talking like thirty thousand square feet businesses that, that, like a storehouse where trucks have to come in and pick up goods, or what?
Potentially, it's one of those permitted uses, or certainly retail, also, you know, warehousing as well would be permitted. Obviously, the site is limited in size. There would be required buffering, required parking, drive aisles. There'd be a number of things that would take up space on the site. But at the same time, there's a lot of different permitted uses allowed in highway business.
Some more congestion.
Mr. Chairman, we're all concerned about Gum Branch Road. I know we, I know we all see the difficulty out there and, and I know we, I know we all see the difficulty out there and Commissioner Buchanan and I serve on transportation, Jumbo, and, and we are certainly pushing every, every chance we get to encourage D O T to move forward. I would just want to note that, you know, the, the residential development out in that area is continuing and is going to continue. And I would argue that by adding some retail, some community business type space on Gum Branch Road, it actually tends to reduce the traffic on Gum Branch Road because people don't have to drive on Gum Branch Road as far to get to what they need. If they put a little restaurant there, then people don't have to drive all the way to Jacksonville to get to a restaurant. If they, if they put a little, I don't know what, a little store, convenience store, whatever, it's just less traffic on Gum Branch Road, in my opinion. It would, it will actually help for us to develop some of that area into some, some commercial instead of it all being residential.
I think I read in the minutes or somewhere it was potential barber shop, I believe, is what they're talking about, but I think by the time you add parking and everything else, that becomes a very small lot.
Right, a half acre lot's not gonna accommodate a very big building.
Do we have any other questions or comments I know we've received and I appreciate Mr. Metcalf having the conversation, Commissioner Scott this morning answering some of the questions that we have and then we've received since then. I've got some emails I've read and some phone calls that we've had that are opposing this. I think all of us received some of those, so I think that plays into the congestion and stuff that's, that's taking place there and, and the problems with the Ramsey Road, Gum Branch light backing up all over the place. So I think we don't have anything, Commissioner Buchanan. I think that's everybody. So we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed?
No.
Mr. Price? So denied four to three, if I see that correctly. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, on that, could, if we could do an affirmative vote for denial as opposed to it just not passing?
Okay. We need all in favor of denying the, the proposed?
We need a motion to deny, second, and then vote on the denial.
Motion to deny.
Motion and a second to deny, discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So motion carries four to three.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So it moves us to consented item, consent agenda items, and we don't have any, so we're right to you, Mr. Smitherman, for your comments.
Yes, sir. Prior to my comments, I'm gonna defer to Mr. DeSelm, who would like to make a comment.
Just real briefly, I normally don't talk at this time in the, the meeting, but I just wanted to say that Ernie Wright was certainly a respected and distinguished attorney and I'm certainly happy for his family that the honor he bestowed upon them, putting that portrait in the courthouse, well deserved and certainly applaud you for that and happy for the family.
Mr. Chairman, for my comments this evening, I wanted to first point out for the public, the grants that we approved this evening, about $15,000 worth of arts council grants and most importantly and impactfully, a $20 million grant for maintenance of our landfill. And we thank Senator Lozara for his hard work and making those resources available to us. They're very important and it will sustain our landfill for a little bit longer and give us opportunities to breathe as we figure out how we keep paying for this important enterprise resource that every person in our county benefits from. Also remind you that, well, before I do, I'll say, please, for the public's awareness, please pay attention to our communications around the comprehensive plan and the work that we will continue to unveil around that planning. It will make these conversations we've had around rezoning this evening, I think sharper and more defined. I think we also have the opportunity to lean into new tools like conditional zoning so that this board can help people get what they want and get less of what we don't want, which I think is the struggle we always have when we rezone parcels and allow all available uses instead of specific uses. Also pick, draw everyone's attention to County Government Month, which is April, and there's been many things going around, including on the first day of April, the unveiling of the county's new mascot, Hamilton, who is curiously shaped like a ham. That was an April Fool's joke, but it was our kickoff of awareness about the important things that counties do in North Carolina and throughout the nation for their citizens. This is employee, county employee week of employee, of county government month. So we have a number of activities this week focused on thanking our employees for the hard work they do. And then finally, I'll point out that solid waste director Jamie Harrell's in the audience with three of his team members and we welcome them here tonight and that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Commissioner Bennett, we'll start at your end tonight, sir. You good with that?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to, to thank Ms. Marcia Wright and, and mention Ernie. Ernie was, was a great inspiration. He was a great county commissioner, one of our colleagues for eight years and I enjoyed the conversations that I had with him. He was very enlightening and he, he's missed and I'm glad that we had the opportunity to post his portrait in the courthouse. Thank you for being here. Also wanted to compliment the sheriff, too much good stuff going on. It'll be great to have our inmates out doing some work, cleaning up our county, looking forward to seeing, seeing those vans and, and trailers, Sheriff. Thank you for that. And finally, we, we considered the charters of freedom several years ago and I think, I think at that point, there was a significant cost involved for the county and apparently that has been removed as an issue. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, to reconsidering this, this opportunity for our courthouse and I hope that we can have some more discussion around that. And I thank everybody for being here tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Walter, thank you for what you did this evening. I appreciate that. And the first time I heard that words, you know, welcome home to our Vietnam vets was from Joe McLaughlin in 2004 when I was a commissioner with Joe and Joe got me off to the side and he says, welcome home, Paul, and then he explained to me what that meant because at that time I did not know. Marcia, what can I say about Ernie? Ernie was kind of a mentor to me when I was a young police officer at Jacksonville P D and when I became a commissioner, many times he'd get me off to the side and he says, well, Paul, you need to think about that before you make that decision. And he was very, very helpful for me and very thoughtful for the things that he'd done. I'm glad to have his picture in the courthouse. I know that I see Tony Paget in the back and I believe, Tony, you served with Ernie. And Ernie was just a great individual, a great individual for me. I mean, he did a lot for me and I learnt a lot from him. I learnt a lot from him as a young police officer, but I went against him in court. He never beat me, but I did win, but that, that just goes with the evidence and, and Ernie was a heck of an attorney, I mean, a heck of an attorney and he did a lot for this community and I want to thank him for that and thank you, Marcia.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Mr. Carver?
Oh, my goodness, I wasn't expecting that. Well, just to echo what's already been said about Mr. Wright, I wish that I would have known him because he sounds like he was a lovely man and probably could have given me some great tips and doing commissioner work that I would have appreciated very much. I'm glad he'll be displayed and honored. Also, I want to thank Mr. Lewis for coming and doing that presentation. I think that is a fantastic opportunity that we have to be adding to Jacksonville and, well, Onslow County. And being a homeschool mom, I know we did make the trek all the way up to DC and for the families that are here that homeschool, oh, my goodness, that would be such an honor and the public school kids as well. I think it's wonderful. I had some very busy times over the last, probably just week in general, but airport advisory meeting and just want to let you know, for anybody that is ever interested in going to see local art, and I'm not talking about necessarily adults doing it, but we have middle school artists that are going to be having art on display starting next Monday, April 22nd. So if you want to go take a visit out there, that's something good to do. Attended the Jacksonville Onslow Economic Development Meeting last week as well and I gotta tell you, those people are so dedicated to the growth and betterment of our community. It is very inspiring. There's some really, really great projects that they're working to bring to Onslow County that will add huge economic development, so y'all should be very excited about that. Hope they come to fruition. And lastly, I attended the Carolina Museum of the Marine Board Meeting and it is very, very exciting for me to see that after decades of this just being a thought, it's actually coming to fruition and the groundbreaking, for those of you who aren't already aware, will be on May the 17th at 8:30 in the morning and I think it's going to be very well supported. So plan to get there early and just enjoy history being made. So have a wonderful week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Commissioner Price?
Yeah, I was pleased to be able to attend the Coastal Historical Society held a luncheon for their four scholarship winners, one of which was a Dixon High School senior. And so enjoyed hearing those students read their, the, the essay that they wrote in the competition for the, for the scholarship. Also, I want to thank Principal Edwards from Richlands Elementary School for the invite to attend Leadership Day out at Richlands Elementary. Kids were doing a great job. They, they have agriculture program out there, which was very interesting. They had some chickens, they had pigs and, and over there on the side, some vegetables growing, you know, just a great, great opportunity for kids to be introduced to farming and agriculture and that kind of thing. So I really liked that. Also, in the, in the gym there or the multipurpose room, whatever they call it, you know, they had kids that set up their, you know, the posters of all the things that they were involved in and stuff throughout the year and, you know, so I enjoyed taking a look at them and talking to the kids about the different things they were involved in. And one of them was a run club and I told them, I actually began running when I was a kid, whenever they, whenever mom would call that supper was ready, I always ran. And that was the only time I ran, but, so I was trying to connect with them, you know? So, yeah, but they are involved in a lot of different stuff out there, so I was, I was happy to attend that. One of the things, one of the committees I'm on is East Carolina Council of Government and one of the opportunities they had for Onslow County was to utilize service to the municipalities and to the counties through the International Economic Development Council. They provide technical assistance to do visits to assist communities, evaluate specific economic development. And one of the things we, I told Mr. Smitherman about that and he said, yeah, we need, we need, we need to take advantage of that because the value of this service is between 10 to, they estimate between $10,000 to $30,000, you know, where they take a look at a specific economic asset. In this case, I think we talked about Burton Park, of looking at Burton Park, you know, how could we utilize it better? And so we are thinking about those types of things, you know, how can we entice people to come here, to locate here for various businesses, whatever it may be? What's the best use? And so instead of utilizing tax money, we, we get a whole lot more bang for our buck with getting these, these experts coming in from the Economic Development Council. So that's a good, good thing as well. Also, they had a, a project there through the East Carolina Council where they were talking about military retention strategies and I went through a phone interview. They were asking for people to provide them feedback and so I, I participated in that. So they were working on that and they will put out a series of recommendations about how to retain, you know, the, the labor force, utilizing military guys who are transitioning out of the military into civilian workforce and how can you take advantage of that as an economic asset as well? So that's something else I was involved in. So thanks for coming out tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Scott?
Well, tonight, you seen the proclamation. You know, I get emotional when, whenever we talk about our military personnel and the personnel that's been involved. You know, it's not, it's not only United States of America, but our allies lost thousands of their personnel too. So I want to thank the men and women across the world for their sacrifice that the United States done also. I want y'all to know, I did not forget Mr. Buchanan's Purple Heart. He served with honor, integrity. He was wounded in action. He also was a deputy sheriff in Onslow County where he received his second Purple Heart. He's got to be a tough individual to keep doing what he does on a day in and day out basis. He's not stopped and I'm not trying to build him up one bit. He's earned every bit of it. And I will never forget what I've said today, the way we presented that proclamation today. I encourage you to be out there on the 27th at 1000 hours to see the proclamation presented again and I assure you, there will be a tearjerker. God bless you, good night, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Vice Chairman?
Just a few things. Tony, good to see you in the audience. I guess you're preparing yourself, so good on you. I hope you're taking notes, but it's old, it's old news to you anyway, so welcome aboard. Ms. Wright, thank you for coming today. I knew your husband, Ernie, like Paul, I was with N C I S at the time, I had to sit across from him when he cross-examined me on a couple of cases and I still remember those vividly back in the nineties and he was, let's just say, very relentless and very picky and, but I respect him and I have mutual friends that knew him. I think Ernie was a great, great individual, period. He deserves the honor that he gets and he carried a lot of respect and weight in this county and a lot of us miss him and I've had personal talks with him and he's always been like the fatherly-like figure, giving me advice and I really appreciate it and I appreciate you coming today and speaking before the Board of Commissioners. You know, you talk about Vietnam, I remember Vietnam very well as a kid. My father was a vet and I still remember being with my mom, going to the airport to pick him up when he flew in from Vietnam and I must have been eight or nine years old and I still remember that and the way he was treated when he came back from Vietnam, serving his second tour. It wasn't memorable, to say the least, and I'm not gonna get into details, but I'm glad to see the switch in the United States and how we appreciate our veterans and, you know, we're welcoming home, even after all these years, we're welcoming, welcoming them home, such as Paul, you know, he received a Purple Heart. Everybody that served in Vietnam served honorably, you know, even though they were drafted, they went and there was a lot of people that volunteered to go to Vietnam and I remember vividly as eight, nine-year-old kid, watching the news on TV back in the day when you only had four channels, if you all remember that. And I was watching the CBS nightly news of Walter Cronkite talking about bombings and things like that and I was, my face was glued to the TV because my father was there and I was hoping, you know, as a kid, hoping to get a glimpse of him on TV, which was not gonna happen. But fortunately, my father made it back safely and it was a great presentation tonight and I want to commend all the veterans that served in Vietnam and all the veterans. I myself am a veteran and it's a, it's an honor to serve our country, no matter what branch of service, it is an honor and privilege to serve this great nation and we, we should always remember that and always remember our people, they come back from any type of conflict and all the active duty veterans, reservists, National Guards people, et cetera. So I want to, I want to commend them for a great presentation, Walter. Sheriff Thomas, what can I say, man? You're a breath of fresh air. Anytime that, you know, we have questions or I have questions with the sheriff, I can pick up the phone and call him and ask him directly. He's very candid, he can be very blunt, which I appreciate, but I know that his heart is in serving this, this county as the sheriff. He shows it every day. He goes out of his way and he makes the time to talk and he makes the time to support those people and answer questions. So I just wanted to give you my thank you, Sheriff, for all that you do, for your friendship first, first and foremost, but as a fellow law enforcement officer, I really respect, respect you and what you do and what you stand for. And lastly, but not least, I want to thank my staff, or our staff, I should say, the Board of Commissioners, to allow us to be very candid in some of these meetings, to speak our mind. You guys take it, you listen to us, you don't fluff it off. I've been wanting to say this for a long time, some of us can get very opinionated very quickly and kind of lose our, our focus on a particular issue because we're passionate about it, but I just want to thank you guys for, for listening and taking it and providing the, the perfect guidance and direction and giving us that objective look as we try to make a decision. So I just want to say, I appreciate everything that you guys do. Other than that, I hope, I'm glad you all came out tonight and we'll see you at the next Board of Commissioners meeting and just go home safely, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Wright, it's just good seeing you tonight. I've seen you several times over the last few weeks and always enjoyed the conversations and all the wonderful things you said about your husband. And I always known him as Mr. Wright. I never, it took me a long time to realize it was Ernie. And I just, it was a family thing because he was doing a lot for the community in the capacity as an attorney, taking care of those that couldn't take care of themselves. And all those years, the guardian, ad litem, as that attorney, just stepping out there. But can't forget that you were there, too. You were very much involved in this community, supporting and helping others. So I think that was a big family affair, and y'all represent what we should do as people is we need to take care of others that need us to help take care of them. And it's good to see you here tonight. Well-deserved honor for not only your husband, but for you and your family as well. And the support group you had with you tonight. I may have seen the doctors getting there a few times back when I was over at Hunter's Creek Middle School, so it was good to see them here tonight. Gentleman here, I don't know, but if he's here with you, he's got to be good people. So we appreciate the people that come out to support you tonight. So just an honor for that portrait to go up there. Very good, very good. Sheriff Thomas, we appreciate what you're doing and spending that money and making it worthwhile, doing things in Onslow County. And I had to call him this weekend, and I appreciate his quick work with the Onslow County Sheriff's Office in conjunction with others. Unfortunately, the outcome wasn't what we were hoping it would be, but you were there, and the family knows that. We appreciate you doing that out of Onslow County to help the surrounding counties there. Richlands Elementary was great. We walked into the gym, and I had, I had fourth and fifth graders telling me about Odyssey of the Mind. If you don't know what that is, that is just an amazing thing that kids do. The other part of it is the math counts. I got a fifth grader, you know, "You as smart as a fifth grader?" Obviously, I found out last week. I am not, because his math skills were a lot better than mine. And then the other, the reading program where they have the book, I can't even think of that one right now. It was always held at Southwest High School where the kids have a dozen books, they read, and then they're quizzed on that, and you hear from those kids just doing that. And then the dance club, the creative writing club. The work that is going on in the schools is amazing across the board in creating wonderful, wonderful kids that are going to become future leaders here, and it was great to see all that work and what the principal there did, Ms. Corinne Edwards. Fantastic work there. And Solid Waste, man, it's good to see you here. The work that you do, people don't realize what you take and do in a day, and if you weren't able to do it and couldn't take care of it, it wouldn't be a place for us to take what we needed to get rid of. It would be around the house because you move a lot of stuff from sunup to sundown that people don't realize. I was there Friday at noon, just to drop off a little bit. I'm not sure what everybody was doing at noon on Friday, but I know what was going on at the Onslow County landfill and what your team was doing there, Jamie, because there was a lot of people there for noon on Friday lined up to go there, and you definitely do a job of taking care of business out there. We appreciate everything that you do there. Mr. Lewis, we appreciate you coming in tonight and sharing the charters of freedom, and I really thought it was, it was real important that adding the fourth there with the Civil Rights Amendments, that just, I think that solidifies what those charters of freedom represent. That's something that I feel sure we're going to talk about in the future and see how that turns out. And if that ends up at our courthouse there, then it's just something else that we can add that we should require. No one from Onslow County schools has made it here tonight, but there's things that we should do in Onslow County. Because I remember going to the battleship in Wilmington, going to Raleigh to the Capitol, going to Tryon Palace, all destinations each year that you did in elementary school. The destination for Onslow County schools, especially our elementary school kids, should be eventually Carolina Museum of the Marine, and definitely Lejeune Memorial Gardens, from the Beirut Memorial, the Monfort Point Memorial, the Vietnam Memorial, the Korman Memorial, the 9/11 Memorial, and then the museum. Unbelievable what's right here in Onslow County, and these kids need to know about it. Congratulations to the Onslow County Parks and Rec, started their senior games on Saturday. Lots of participation going on there. Great job in getting folks out there, and, you know, it's just a lot of people getting out there and participating, and it's good to see the citizens, seniors, getting out there and doing that. This morning, I was invited to go over and speak at Blue Creek Elementary School. They had a breakfast for the, it's the month of the military child, and it was a cafeteria full of kids and their parents, and it is always something to see because their parents sign up for service. The kids don't, but the military kids are some of the most resilient, hard-working kids that we have. They are just tremendous. And I know that because I'm married to one of those military kids, and if I didn't say she was tremendous, it could be trouble for me. But she was, and it's always good to see, recognizing that in Onslow County in particular, because we are part of this major, major network of military and a part of the fabric of our community, which is a great transition right into... Commissioner Buchanan, you're right, you didn't hear those words when you returned from Vietnam because they weren't saying those words. Now we line the streets, we fly the flags, we come back from operations in Grenada, we come back from operations all over the globe, and we welcome our military, our Marines back home, especially in Jacksonville, North Carolina. So without a doubt, you hearing "Welcome home" is tremendous today, tomorrow, and in the future. And those that are listening, if you see a veteran of any kind, in particular Vietnam veterans, welcome home. It's always great to have them to come back home. And the last thing that I'll say is that, or two things I'll say, is Joe Hutton, retired lieutenant colonel, he was a magistrate in Onslow County, he was a pilot on helicopters in Vietnam, and he has a book coming out, Moments of Stark Terror. I have no idea what that's like, but I sure am appreciative of the men and women that do, so I can come to work and do what I do at this time in the United States. And I think, I just remember in the movie The Green Beret with John Wayne, at the end of that movie, he's holding the hand of the little kid that was there on the beach with him from Vietnam, and he looked up to him and he said, "What are we going to do about me?" And John Wayne looked down at him, and he said, "Son, that's why we're here." And I thought to myself, there is no other nation like the United States that we are the defenders of freedom across this globe, across this globe. And it's imperative that we remember that, especially with our allies over in Israel. With that being said, thank you for telling us that Hamilton was an April Fool's prank, because I have been beat up a lot over Hamilton. It's his fault. So with that being said, motion to adjourn. So moved in. We are adjourned.